Give us the land acquisition acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral lands of the Chipewa, the Ottawa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishna Bag. The town of Petroya is located on the lands associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number Twenty-nine of eighteen twenty-seven. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. I would like to ask council in regards to declaring a conflict of interest, and if on an item coming forward, please declare any conflicts of interest and complete the necessary paperwork with the Director of Legislative Services Deputy Operations Clerk.
And your worship, I did receive an advance declaration from Deputy Mayor Field in relation to item sixteen B.
Okay, thank you. That will take us to the adoption of the agenda before you tonight. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Please move by Counselor Clerk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That would be for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt as presented the agenda of the May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four regular session of council.
Any discussion regarding the agenda before you? If not, all those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That will take us on to the first item, which is the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April the eighth. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor Patel. And again, there was a technical error. That's why this is in April the eighth. Any discussion regarding that motion before you? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the Council of Petroya to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on April the eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the minutes of a regular council meeting held on May the thirteenth. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Deputy Mayor Fields, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll open it up for discussion. Any questions? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt as circulated minutes of the regular meeting of council held on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. We also have the minutes of a council education session dated May the thirteenth. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put those minutes on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. Any discussion from council regarding those minutes? I'll ask the clerk to read those minutes, please.
That is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to adopt as circulated minutes of the education session of council held on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
No further discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. And we've also received notes of a public information session held on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that on the motion, or put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file as information notes of the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four public information session held regarding the zoning bylaw amendment of four eleven Wingfield Street.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? Not all those in favor of approving those? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to our moment of reflection. I'm going to ask for everyone to please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. That'll take us to a roundtable announcements with all the councils, and tonight we start with Counselor Patel, please.
Nothing to share at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor O'Hara.
Only one thing is I attended the play Oil Rush yesterday, and boy, it was a great show. It made me proud to be a Petroyian, I'll tell you.
Thank you for that. I went on Friday night, and you're right. I was very proud. And for those that saw it, it was great. If you didn't see it, that's unfortunate. Counselor Welsh.
Just that this coming weekend Petroya Discovery will open for our season on weekends in June.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Field.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. As usual, I have a few items I'd like to bring to your attention. I attended Mrs. Jane Joris, General Manager of the Long Term Care for the County of Lampton Retirement Party on Tuesday, May fourteenth. I wish to the very best on behalf of council and staff of the Town of Petroya. It was a nice event with a large turnout. I attended a committee of county council meeting held at the Western Sarnia Lampton Research Park on Wednesday, March fifteenth. That turned out to be very interesting, but a nice change, and I will continue to keep council informed. I also took part in the IG Wealth Management All-Timers Walk on Saturday, May eighteenth, starting at the Black Gold Brewery. I brought greetings on behalf of council staff and thank everyone for participating. I also stated that today we stand together to show that we refuse to let Alzheimer's define those we love. Lunch and music was supplied by Jeff Black, followed by incentives, and the top earder was recognized. It was a great event and good time by everyone involved. And just for your information, I did walk the five kilometers. I started the first walk with the mayor on Tuesday, with the mayor on Tuesday, May twenty-first. That was very successful. However, I'd like to see a larger turnout, so we will be walking again on Tuesday, and if you want to run, you get to run with the C A O. And that is six o'clock Tuesday nights, meeting at the Y. I brought greetings on behalf of council and staff, stated with immense joy and gratitude, I welcomed everyone to the grand opening of our beloved farmer's market for the season on Saturday, May the twenty-fifth. This marks a special occasion when we come together to celebrate the bounty of our land, the dedication to our local farmers, and the spirit of community that binds us all. That's all I have. We'll move on now to the committees, and we have, first of all, we have the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Patel and Counselor Clark. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead?
I guess I will, since Counselor Patel had some technical difficulties. Not a lot to report outside of the minutes, other than the upcoming or current participaction program, which I'm guessing that Mr. Charlebleau will speak a little more to later in the minutes.
Yes, okay. Is that all?
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Now, I need a, I'd like to have a motion, if I move it a seconder to put the minutes on for discussion, please. Would you like to move that, Mr. Clark?
Sure.
Ms. Sel, you want to second that, Counselor Sel? Okay, any discussion regarding those minutes of the Wellness Committee held on May twenty-first? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to endorse as presented minutes of the Community Health and Wellness Advisory Committee meeting held on May twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding those minutes? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. We have Counselor Clark, and Counselor Hyatt is absent tonight. So Counselor Clark, you're on the, you've got the floor.
Pardon me. Nothing really outside of the minutes. Actually, Mike just mentioned to me that they paved the parking lot at the soccer fields last week, near the end of the week, so that's progressing over there for use next season. And other than that, we're going forward with the summer events, starting this Saturday with Pizza Fest.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Clark. So would you like to move that motion?
I will.
I'll need a seconder from council to put that on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor Welsh, and I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to endorse as presented minutes of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting held on May first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Any discussion from council regarding those minutes? That'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Next is the Petroya Youth Advisory Committee, and we have Counselor Patel. Again, Counselor Hyatt is absent, so Counselor Patel, you have the floor.
Thank you through you. So we had our meeting last week, and we were able to get our agenda planned and elect our new chair, co-chairs, and added two new youths to our committee, which is great. We'd like to see some more, and I know that the youth in the community are looking for that. We also need some adult that have some time, that want to support the youth in the programs. Lots of energy and lots of planning that will be presented with the minutes in June, including some volunteer that they're going to do for the community events with Pizza Fest, et cetera, support the, the service clubs that have supported the youth advisory to date, as well as some participaction ideas that they would like to launch. So you'll hear about that in June.
Okay, and I will mention that the minutes will be presented on the June twenty-fourth council meeting or at the next council meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, that'll move us on to the Conservation Authority, and I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Move by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
We just need Counselor O'Hara's update, but once we have that, we'll receive and file his update.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor O'Hara. Do you have anything? Nothing to report?
No, nothing to report.
Okay, council got a copy, so you had all the information before you. All right, so.
I did not, so.
Okay, I'll get the clerk to read that motion.
I'm going to tweak that. Receive and file the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority meeting update held on May, in May two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Any discussion regarding the update? It was short. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Municipal Services and Traffic. We have Counselor Hyatt, who is absent, and we have Deputy Mayor Field on that, so I'll ask Deputy Mayor Field to report on that committee, please.
Thank you through you. We have Tank Street Reconstruction well underway. The road is closed, and the ditch and drainage work is ongoing. Compost and wood chipping continues. We have experienced a few issues with large trees that have been cut down and put at the road, so when the whole front yard is full of branches, it's a bit of a challenge for our staff. Sidewalk tender, we've had great interest in it. There's a great response for the bid, and it's on the agenda for tonight, which is good. And we have a new backhoe, which is scheduled to arrive in June. We did have a small fire at the pump station on Barlett Lane, but I think thanks to the quick response from the Petroy North and a Skellam Fire Department, it was quickly put out with minor damage. And I guess I'd like to thank our former works foreman, who checks the town every morning, seems to still be driving around, and he's the one that called that in, so that's, that's great. I think right after the fire department, he called Jacobs, and they were aware within minutes as well, so it was a great response from everybody involved, so that's it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. I also made a point to thank Mr. Garrett as well. All right, I need a mover and a seconder to put that on, put those minutes on the floor for discussion. Would you move that, Deputy Mayor Field?
Yeah.
Seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on municipal services happenings.
Any discussion? They'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the Planning and Development. Our liaison members are Deputy Mayor Field and Counselor Welsh. Which one of you would like to take the lead on this one? Counselor Welsh, go ahead, please.
There really isn't a lot to report. The projects that have been in progress are still in progress, and as soon as we have something to report on their progress, we'll let everyone know.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Welsh. Would you like to make a motion to move those minutes before you? Okay, move by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file Counselor Welsh's update on planning and development happenings.
Any discussion from council? I've got lots of minutes tonight. All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to Correspondence. We have items A to F. I'll ask for a mover and a seconder to put them on, on the floor for discussion, please. Need a move, move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Any discussion regarding A to F, or if you want to deal with any of them separately? Okay, if not, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the Council of the Town of Petroya to receive and file Correspondence Items eleven A through F.
Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Moving right along, Correspondence for consideration and motion, there isn't any tonight, but delegations and presentations, we have two. First on our list is Mrs. Janice McMichael Dennis on the, regarding the two thousand and twenty-three year, and I'd like her to, ask her to come forward, please.
Thank you.
And if you would like to introduce the staff present, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Lucely. Good evening to Mayor, council, and all our friends in Petroya. On behalf of Blue Water Power, we're exceptionally pleased to be here this evening, and I'm very pleased to introduce Brad, excuse me, Brad Goodhill. I just choked there a little bit. My apologies. You choked me up. Brad Goodhill, the representative on the Blue Water Power Board of Directors, who represents the Town of Petroya's interests. So we are both pleased to be here. Our purpose here this evening is to provide an annual update to the Town of Petroya on the two thousand and twenty-three, our most recent fiscal and operating year activities. We are pleased to join you to provide this. Please know that we are available for you at any time, whenever you need an update, but we do make a point of coming out at least annually to make sure you're aware of what your assets are doing and what we're doing on behalf of the community. The agenda that we'll follow briefly, and I won't take up much time, I wanted to go over the two thousand and twenty-three numbers with you, look at some of the successes of two thousand and twenty-three, we'll look at operations update, we'll look at what the average bill is doing, we'll look at the affiliate companies of Blue Water Power, we'll talk a bit about our board of directors, and then we'll close it all up. I'm more than happy to take questions as we go or at the end. Certainly, I'm here to, to your pleasure, and please let me know what I can do to help as we move through. So, starting, may I start, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Absolutely. Thank you. We're on slide three. Who's doing my slides for me? Thank you. Thanks so much, Jess. I appreciate that. Slide three, the two thousand and twenty-three numbers, and we'll flip that over. So the most important number that Blue Water Power registers every single year is the amount of lost time injury-free hours. We are sitting currently at two-point-two million hours. That's the most important thing we do in any year, or in any day, or in any period of our lives. We work in the most dangerous, one of the most dangerous, it was in the top three, now in the top ten, thanks to some advancements in protection, but working in one of the most dangerous industries in the world, there's nothing more important than sending your people home safe and sound. I'm pleased to say that next to that, our financial numbers also came in exceptionally good. The consolidated two thousand and twenty-three net income before tax was eight-point-one million dollars. That represents an all-time historic high for the group of companies. The gross revenue for the group of companies, a hundred and forty million. Income before tax was up significantly over budget, and it was not done on the backs of utility ratepayers. You always had, and you will always have, our commitment that we will not bring success through hydro bills. So I'm pleased to say that in two thousand and twenty-three, despite the excellent numbers, the residential rate impact, or total bill impact on behalf of the Blue Water Power part of the bill that we control, was one-point-two percent. The commercial impact was about one percent. So again, all-time record high numbers, but not through customer rates. If we flip it to the next slide, Jess, please. I'm pleased to say that we exceeded budgeted dividends. We actually had the highest operating dividends of all times, and we'll talk about what that means. We reinvested almost twelve million dollars in local infrastructure, so those are hard assets. That's poles and wires, transformers, everything to make sure that we can reliably and safely and consistently deliver your power. When you have an asset base in your distribution company or with distribution assets of about ninety million, that's representing about a twelve percent impact each year in reinvestments. That is some really strong infrastructure investment, I'm pleased to say. Our expenses came in below budget. We hit some all-time high revenues in some of our companies, and again, I say it twice because it's so important, but we're never going to get rich on the, at the expense of the hydro customers or the utility bills. I'm really pleased to say that I'm a very small part of a team that comes through every single year, and I couldn't be more proud of that. We can move on to see what this means all in all. So total municipal turns, municipal returns in two thousand and twenty-three were three-point-five, just over three-point-five million dollars, almost three-point-six. The Town of Petroya's returns were two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-three. If I look back to two thousand and twenty-two, that's up about four percent over the two thousand and twenty-two number. If I look back into two thousand and twenty-one, that number's up about twelve percent. So very pleased to be able to return money back to our communities, which helps you, of course, offset your budget and which in turn is a place against municipal taxes. We move on to the next part, just a part of our story that we like to share. Blue Water Power was always a leader in affiliate business development in the province of Ontario. We were one of the first two utilities in Ontario who said, you know what, we need to keep bringing value back to our communities, but again, it's not through hydro bills. So we said, what can we do to bring that value back? If I can flip the slide there, Jess. So what we did is we've added four new companies and literally almost a hundred lines of businesses to those new companies. Those are competitive companies without subsidization from the utility. The revenue from our other lines of business has grown almost thirty times. Our net income after tax in these businesses has grown significantly. We in turn never ignored our hard assets. We never ignored the fact that our bread and butter is to be a utility, and as such, we continue to reinvest in that infrastructure. How much? Well, over the last decade, almost a hundred million dollars in local infrastructure. We've added offices outside of Sarnia Lampton, including an office in Sudbury and an office in London. It's always exceptionally good when you can bring money from outside your community into your community, especially when you have municipal shareholders. We're also very proud to be a strong community partner. We provide both financial donations and non-financial support, and always very proud through our community fund to really play an active and valuable role in our community. We want people to think of Blue Water Power as not just your hydro bill, but the people who sponsor sports and and help sponsor activities. That's really important to us as being a member of the Petroya and our other shareholder municipal communities. The end result of that, well, it's sixty million dollars since Blue Water Power was formed way back in the year two thousand. Yep, you're right, Rick. So very pleased to say sixty million dollars has returned through to municipal bank accounts since that time, and that's something that we're proud of to be able to do for you. We are here for our community, we serve our community, and that's something that we're very pleased to be able to share with you. In terms of an operations, I'm going to just talk to you a bit about reliability, because again, our bread and butter, what we were formed with, our base, our backbone, was always a utility. So that's very important. Regardless of how many checks we provide, what donations we provide, at the end of the day, if your power isn't on, you're not really happy with us. So we recognize we're only as good as that moment when the power is on and the lights are on. So reliability is absolutely critical, and we get that. It can be disruptive or inconvenient for a residential customer, but when it comes to our larger customers, it can be catastrophic. Reliability is important. Jess, we'll move on the next slide. Thank you. Overall, our reliability is ninety-nine-point-nine-eight percent. So yes, that's exceptionally good and very, very proud to be able to share that number with you. However, we're always working on that. We can never sit still with that, even though it's a point-zero-two percent of outages that we have. Those are still critical to us. Most of those are caused by weather or storm, but I'm really proud to tell you that we have outstanding storm response. Our operations crews are really second to none, and I always say that I'm lucky just to get to hang out with them. We, the storm response that our team gives is superior. I mean, it's, it's as, it's as close as your phone, and it's because our people live and work here, right? And they are part of the community, and they get that community attachment. So very proud to work with that team who make sure that the lights are always on. We talked about it before. We reinvested over eleven million in local utility infrastructure. Again, back to making sure those lights are on when you flick the switch. I'm very proud to say that the base of our group of companies, the Hometown Utility, continues to be very strong. The Town of Petroya, along with our other shareholders, made a very good decision back in the year two thousand, when they elected to retain ownership of their local utility. If I move on, please, Jess, thank you. The question that we always get is how much has the average electricity bill increased by over the years? Because of course, it's really important how much you're writing that check for when the homeowners or the businesses receive their monthly bill. The next page contains a graph, which shows you a history of bills from two thousand and sixteen. So if I look from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-four, our average bill for a residential customer all-in is actually down eleven dollars. So there's very few commodities, bills, or any other type of service you can provide that actually has a rate decrease over that period. We did have a five-dollar increase from two thousand and twenty-three, you'll note, but again, only one percent of that was the part that Blue Water Power controls. The rest was due to commodity pricing, which is basically set through provincial energy policy. So overall, an eight percent decrease since two thousand and sixteen, despite what we know were some pretty significant inflation numbers in there, especially a year like two thousand and twenty-two, where we had almost seven percent inflation. So we're very proud to be able to show a history of responsible rate management to our shareholders, to our communities, and to our customers. If we'll move on to provide you an update of our affiliate companies, and these are the businesses that we have either purchased or grown, homegrown from scratch over the years, I'm pleased to provide you with a brief update. Elektac is our high-voltage company. They have, provide very highly respected work right across all of Canada. They are called to be west, they're called for Quebec, they're called to be in Nova Scotia. Right across Canada, Elektac provide, is often the high-voltage service provider of choice. A lot of local customers that we're very important to, Elektac's very important to, and that are very important to us, but what we think of as the former Chemical Valley, the oil and gas, all that, all those industries normally very strong proponents of Elektac and very good customers, and we're pleased to be able to serve them in that regard. We have Elektac offices not only in Sarnia, across from us on Confederation Street, but also in London and Sudbury. Again, bringing those dollars home, the Sudbury Market has a lot of mining-type customers at that area, and our London Market does, customers such as Labats is a good example of the, the commercial market there that we're able to service. Our services company provides many, many different lines of business. We grew that one from scratch. We do civil construction, we do streetlights, which we're happy to do. Third-party lines work, we do hydrovacuuming, and we do water maintenance, water billing, as well as about seventy-eight other smaller things all in there. So we had a very good year in two thousand and twenty-three as well, again, while being respectful of any type of rate impacts. We have a renewable company, a renewable energy company, which owns a part of landfill gas in partnership with waste management at the Warwick landfill, the Twin Creeks, and we have, I'm sorry, I'm the Petroya landfill, my apologies. I was thinking about the Warwick landfill, my apologies, Petroya landfill. We also have several solar projects, all with very stable and solid long-term returns. Our fiber company created out of necessity when Blue Water Power itself was not receiving satisfactory communications or telecommunications services. They have done, they've had an exceptionally good year in two thousand and twenty-three. That company, it's been a tough go. We put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into that. It's very asset-intensive. You have to put a lot of money into the air or into the ground to be able to provide fiber internet services, but we turned a very nice and respectful, a good profit in two thousand and twenty-two, and further that in two thousand and twenty-three. We've signed almost ten million dollars in contracts in our fiber company, and very pleased to be able to bring that homegrown service with the Blue Water Power touch to our local customers there. Still not doing any fiber to the home, a bit to. Still not doing any fiber to the home, a bit too asset intensive at this point, but pleased to provide a whole host of commercial and industrial and mush sector municipal utility and hospital type services. This is all an attempt to keep the dollars in our hometowns, in your hometown, and to make sure that we can provide the very best service and the very best returns to our owners. If we move on to the next slide, part of our annual update includes an update on our board of directors. As part of our annual process on the board, we recommend to our municipal shareholders the reappointment of our board. I can't state enough that an outstanding board has been key to what we have been able to do, and I am very proud of that and very pleased to be able to say that we continue to bring you a board of directors that is highly respected and highly regarded, not only locally, but right across the province. Gary McDonald is our Chair of the Board. He sends his regrets this evening. And Margaret Dragon is our Vice Chair of the Board. And also, I'm checking, she is also on the End of the Good Shepherd Board. She had a board meeting. She was going to try to get here on time, but I don't see her. But so she also sends her regrets. Of course, as I mentioned, Brad, representing your interest on the board, is not only a valuable board member, but he's a key part of our executive committee, which is the three-person steering group on our board of directors that really helps to lead and provide governance assistance with anything of a strategic nature. Steve Bolt recently retired. He provided us with years of valuable service. He was a City of Sarnia appointee, and we've sent Mr. Bolt our very best and are grateful for his leadership over the years. We are recommending this will be the City of Sarnia decision that we're recommending no need to replace Mr. Bolt as our skillset is completely intact even with Mr. Bolt's departure. I am pleased to be able to say that Mayor Loosely informed me and then the lovely Mandy gave me the documents before the meeting to say that you had approved your board reappointment at the last meeting, and that provides me with great pleasure, and I'm very pleased to hear that. It's always, as a CEO, that board relationship and that having that caliber of board is so important to what we do every day. So our board of directors there with the pictures, that's Gary. You may remember him from former CEO of Lampton, Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce, Margaret, who's our Vice Chair and was formerly the CFO at Lampton College. Dr. Catherine Albion, anybody who's involved with Lampton County would know Dr. Albion as leading the research park. On the next page, we have Sandy Marshall, who leads the Bio Industrial Innovation Canada. We have Doug Solomon, who is a senior partner with extensive utility experience with O'Brien, Solomon, McGivern Lawyers, based out of Chatham, actually. And then we have, of course, our good friend there, Brad Goodhill, who is with me here this evening and is the Warwick Township Fire Chief. And certainly his apologies for his phone, but as we know, and as Rick knows, a fire chief's work is never done, right? I mean, you're always, that's, we, we respect that. In closing, just to kind of bring it all together and bring it home. First of all, whenever we talk about, again, the first comment has to be, we were safe. Everybody went home. Everybody went home to their families and was able to come to work and go home safely. We hit an all time high net income in 2023. That was after hitting an all time high net income in 2022. So we have had a, a record of success that we could never have envisioned, and that's due to a completely awesome, for lack of a better word, team together with our board. We significantly exceeded all our targeted financial returns. We pleased to say we knocked that ball out of the park. It was not on the backs of utility payers. We spoke to you about earlier about the 1% impact for residential customers and commercially customers. We had really high customer satisfaction and public safety awareness ratings. 87% of customers said they were satisfied with Blue Water Power, and 63% of them said they were very satisfied. I wanted a very, very, very satisfied column, but the researcher said we couldn't do that. But if you give out hydro bills for a living, or that's what most people think of you as, and you can get an 87% customer satisfaction rating, that means your team is doing something really right. The public safety awareness score was 91%. Again, with public upon being contacted, said that they were pleased with the safety of Blue Water Power and generally aware of electrical safety due to our efforts. We provided exceptional community support. That's important to us. We're always pleased to participate with the Town of Petroya with your activities each year, and we're pleased to always participate with anything important going on, whether it be your pizza day, we're involved in your amazing concert lineups, and already have people knocking down our door saying, how do we get those hands on those tickets? So congratulations to you. That takes a lot of effort to bring in that type of talent. And overall, outstanding utility operations, outstanding storm response. And really, in closing, what I'm always proud to say is really a true hometown success story. If you would have said 24 years ago, okay, what's Blue Water Power, what's the Petroya PUC going to look like? I don't think we ever could have imagined the status that we're at today. And again, that's thanks to a team that is second to none, and I couldn't be more proud of each and every one of them. So in closing, I'm pleased to share that update, update of success with our partners here at the Town of Petroya, and I'm always pleased to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mrs. McMichael Dennis. I have a few comments before I open it up to council. And that is, I love hearing your report. Every year seems to get better. Every year we get more money, and I wish we had more of that, but I want to congratulate you and your staff for doing that. Also for holding the line on the electrical rates is great. But I want, I want to give you a little history for those that are sitting here. Councillor O'Hara, I believe, was the mayor at that time when we brought in Blue Water Power. And I, I remember there was a debate whether we should be doing that or not, and it's probably one of the best things this town has ever done. So thank you for that. It's great news. And for those present too, we will have the, the annual meeting here in Victoria Hall, I believe, on Thursday.
That's correct, Mayor Loosely.
So at seven o'clock, anyone's welcome to come. And you may hear some of it again, but again, I'll stop there. But I am really pleased at the report. I'll ask Mr. Chalabat too, before we open it up, just exactly, how much more money are we getting this year compared to last year?
Compared to last year? Well, it's the highest ever in 23 years, I guess, of returns from Blue Water Power. We had 150,000 in dividends and about 109,000, yeah, for the loan that we have with Blue Water Power.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And the amount from greater than last year, Rick?
Hint, about 12,000 or 13,000.
If I recall correctly, I, Mayor, Mayor, thanks about 12,000.
Well, I was going to get to that. I think it was on our notes, but thank you for that. But the point is, it's, it seems to get better every year. And Councillor O'Hara can remember well, because I, I remember, I think, and I'll just tell you a quick story. We asked him to step out so we could discuss it, and, but we did decide to, to go with you. Anyway, I'll open it up to council. Deputy Mayor Field.
I heard that, that Councillor O'Hara was there with the light bulb as well. I didn't know where you're going with that. Janice, thank you very much for your partnership. And I do appreciate, I knew Rick would be on the finance numbers, but I was excited to hear the 2.2 million man hours work safely. That's a huge accomplishment. Yeah, that's great. Congratulations for, for working safe and sending everybody home. And, you know, the money does help as well, so we do appreciate that. But it's always a positive report, and as the mayor said, it's, it's great to hear. I feel like we have a good representative. The Warwick thing is a bit of a challenge for us, but we, we put up with that part. So, but it's always great to hear from you, and thanks for what you're doing.
Thank you.
For your whole team.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Counselor Clark.
Pardon me. I'm just going to say, although my first term of council, I'm a longtime member of the Parks and Rec Committee, and just thank you for your multiple donations to our events.
Thank you. Our pleasure.
Councillor O'Hara.
Through you, your worship. You know, we hear of these devastating storms coming through the Midwest and, and many different places, and we've been very lucky in Sarnia Lampton not to really experience too bad of one. So my question is, if we did have something like that, do, does Blue Water Power have insurance, or does that, how, how would we repair everything?
Yes, thank you, thank you, councillor. So we do have insurance, but you can't insure storm work, so to speak. So we have a wide range of insurance, but nothing for storm work specifically. What would happen in that case, Councillor O'Hara, is we would go to the regulator if it was extreme costs to say, and we saw Hydro Ottawa do it with a terrible storm that hit the Hydro Ottawa area, go to the province and say, okay, what do we do now? Help us out because the local infrastructure cannot take this type of cost, the local shareholders can't. So we would turn it over to the province for their assistance, and they've been quite responsive. Hydro Ottawa has been working through that with them. Having said that, we are reinvesting to always ensure that our infrastructure is, is hardened as it can be, is the word used in Ontario now, the hardening of the assets for just that reason, for storms, and to ensure that nothing is sitting there waiting for any type of impact. We actually in 2023 had what I believe was the largest infrastructure impact certainly of my time, and I hate to acknowledge my old age, but I've been there over 20 years. But the worst storm impact we've had, but it was pockets, and in particular, a really hard hit pocket in Sarnia where we had, it was not only Sarnia, but also in Elvinston, a terrible pocket, and where we had people around the clock working. In terms of resources, Councillor O'Hara, we have mutual aid agreements and emergency agreements with our friends, not only at Hydro One, but right across Ontario and actually right across North America. You often hear Blue Water Power going somewhere in Florida to help with hurricane relief. In turn, if we have major damage, we can bring those folks here to help us. So we're covered in terms of resources. In terms of actual dollars, we would have to turn towards the province for some sort of solution. We have access to exceptional amount, we are very strong financial structure. We have access to exceptional amounts of capital, but you normally turn to the provincial regulators for assistance in any type of extreme situation.
Thank you. Councillor O'Hara, that's, that's okay. All right, Councillor Welsh.
Just some kudos. You have wonderful staff and employees. They're so good when they're, I guess, planting a pole, for lack of a better term, to engage the kids that, of course, all want to watch and talk to them and tell them what's happening and everything, and that's wonderful, as well as your communication with ratepayers. You, you always keep everybody right up to date on exactly what's happening and when they can expect their power returned and when there's going to be outages, and I know that's very important to people.
Thank you, Councillor Welsh. That means a lot to us. We work very hard at being that softer side as well. The children aspect, you gave me chills, that's important to us. And, and when I see our crews out there and they're interacting, I go on a crew visit and they're interacting with these kids on the side of the road. You know what? That's what community power is all about. That's what you can't buy from someone else. So, and our social media is important too, so thank you for recognizing that. We always recognize that you're an active participant in that. So, yeah, we thank you for your engagement with us.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? If not, thank you for coming to address council. Mr. Goodall, thank you for coming as well. And again, even during the pandemic, we got more money every year, which was terrific. So thanks again.
Our pleasure. Thank you for always being so supportive. We value you as a shareholder and as a community, and we really thank you for your positive remarks and your partnership. Thank you. Our pleasure.
Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Mr. De Hurst, our Animal Control Officer. If you'd like to come forward, please.
My name is Jeff De Hurst. I'm your Animal Control Officer for Petroya. So I was asked to do a little bit of kind of what we've done in the last year. So we've spent, or we sent 22 dogs to jail. Chased many, you know, unfortunately, you can't beat Facebook. Some of the calls that we take on to help the police, we've, we've helped your, your workers over here with, with, down the flats with, with different things, deer, that kind of thing, right? Yeah, so basically, we fielded a lot of calls on, on cats. I know that Petroya has a, the feral cat thing down the road here. Basically, a lot of backyard chicken calls too. We get a lot of, you know, can I have a lamb? You know, this kind of deal. It's, so.
Good.
I am insulted. But what we have found in this last year and a little bit of, of all the dogs that we've interacted with, which is probably close to 50 to 60 dogs, we only found three with dog tags. So that would be my only thing to look at in the upcoming years. At least with a dog tag, when, when I pick up the dog, we at least have a number that I can call the girls in the office and say, hey, I got this dog tag number, you know? Where does Lucy live? You know, or, you know, fortunately, they go to jail.
Deer is exciting. I think we, we used, we used to do the dog census. I'd like to ask the clerk, when was our last dog census? Do you remember?
Yes, your worship. So our last dog census was actually the year before Jeff came on to us. So I don't want to put that agreement, but I think Jeff's been with us for three years now. So, so we're, we're, we're upcoming due for a census. So we do rely on the residents to be forthcoming with their, their animals and register them, and we do a lot of communication about how to register your, your animal, but it is always good to do that, that census, so we can look into that certainly.
And it's set up through the Humane Society, so when we do take these dogs into jail, they have to come back and see the girls to get their dog tag back. Yeah. So then at least you're getting some of your, you know, your revenue back.
Right. Well, the other thing too, I mean, most people love their dogs. If they're gone, if they don't have a tag, there's no way that you can notify them to say, we've got your pet, if you'd like to come and get it, or it's over at the Animal Control in Sarnia. But I'm okay with that. I'll just ask council for any questions, and I have a comment at the end. Councillor Welsh.
Through you. I was just wondering, do you have the ability to read chips? Cause a lot, a lot of people are chipping their pets now.
We do have the ability to read chips. The chip readers, it'll give you a number, and then it'll give you about 15 different phone numbers, which everyone matches.
Okay.
So then you have to go into that system, and if you get the right lady, you'll get the right information.
Interesting.
The ones that the Humane Society has, they have theirs and they have it on computers. But as far as onsite, if they grab your dog, yes, it's chipped, or, or no, it's not.
Okay.
But yes, it is, it is very helpful, especially when we get to the Humane Society. You know, that way your, your dog's not gone three or four days. So yeah, there's, there's lots of stuff that we kind of do, but I never really wrote down on much animal stuff anyway.
Counselor Patel.
Thank you through you. So the 22 dogs that went to jail, how many were returned to their owners through identification, through their tags, or were returned to their owner in other ways?
Most of the time it's on Facebook. When they go on their Facebook page, right? This is a caught dog or, and Facebook's incredible. It's, it's great for message, and it's great for messing up messages, right? Like, a couple of days ago, there was a white box, or I don't know if you've seen it, that was, that got loose over here by McDonald's, right? So we went, we looked for that dog. I ended up getting a call the next day, and it was up back in behind the Legion. And we ended up catching that, did catching the dog, catching the dog for the, for the owner. So he did get his dog back. But normally, yeah, it's, it's, you know, you go on Facebook, hey, there, there she is.
So do you have a number then? Or are you just saying that the, most of them do get back to the owners through Facebook?
Well, I wouldn't, I don't have exact numbers, because there is some that we take there that were abandoned here. Not many.
Are you okay with that, Counselor Patel? Go ahead.
Just a second question. So on that same onus, let's say the dog takes three days to get back to its owner. What's the cost for housing that dog for those days connecting the catch to the return to home?
I don't have those numbers. That's a different, through the Humane Society.
Okay.
I'm sure maybe you can get all those numbers.
I, I'm sure that it would be safe to say that it'd be a fraction of the cost of a dog tag so that we could reunite them quicker. So, so my point would be for the taxpayers to understand that the cost of the dog tag and the security of knowing that that dog is treated well and returned quickly is certainly what we want to do rather than, you know, overlap in some. Correct. Yeah.
And there has been recently quite a bit of, of drop off dogs. Again, this is all part of COVID. Probably not even a year ago, we picked up a, a set of chocolate labs up here by FedEx, or not FedEx, Metaview. Somebody just dumped them and, and left. And fortunately, you know, we take them to jail, and they sit in jail for probably two or three weeks till they get signed over, and then they can get out, right, with the new homes.
I'm going to ask the clerk, Mrs. Pearson, to I'm gonna ask the clerk, Mrs. Pearson, to comment on this, please.
Certainly. So uh, for councillor Patel, when that uh, dog is taken into puppy jail, the owner uh, does have to pay to get that dog out. If they do go and part of our process is that they have to produce the dog tag before they can retrieve the animal. But also the stay in doggy jail is the responsibility of the owner as well because they didn't have the dog tagged, um, which is the offset to the cost of of our licensing program. Because as Jeff indicated, if the dog is licensed, he can pick up the license information and return the dog directly to the home and not incur that additional expense.
How many dog tags would you sell a year this year?
On average, we sell 250 dog tags.
I think council needs to look at a dog census or consider budgeting for it for another year. It's a good point. The, but I would like to ask um, for your, like, usually we'd like you to come once a year. I'd like you to prepare a written report ahead of time for council so they've got it in front of them and they can prepare their questions to, please. Okay. Any other questions from council? If not, thank you for coming to address council and keep up the good work. Thank you. That'll take us on to the community announcements, recognitions and awards. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the May 27th, 2024, community announcements as presented.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing at this time, your worship. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those minutes? Opposed, that motion carries. This takes us to the first opportunity for the public to address council. I'll ask Mrs. Pearson, do we have anyone registered at this time?
Uh, we do not, your worship.
Thank you. I'll ask those present, is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? Please come forward, state your name and address, please. For the record.
Susan Wood, and we just uh, moved into 4075 Petrolia Line at the corner of Petrolia Line and Maud Street. Um, last night, unfortunately, our basement flooded uh, due to the uh, negligence of the town. Uh, we feel that the town has not properly taken care of the road. On uh, on uh, Petrolia Line and Maud Street on, over on the far side, the grade is lower. Therefore, all the water pools there, last night, the water pooled there all up Maud, all over our our property. You couldn't see the sidewalk, you couldn't see the road, you could see nothing. All in front of our house was water everywhere. We, I called the town, there's no emergency number. We had to call the water main guy and he came out and and looked at everything, said that he would let the town know that night, last night, and someone would give me a call. No one called me. I called at 7:30, uh, sorry, 8:30 and left a message. And then finally, um, at nine o'clock, um, Mike Thompson called me. He um, gave us the opinion that this is an ongoing thing in the area. And um, just have your insurance company um, send a claim to the town and uh, they'll deal with it. So I asked him about the water that's pooling in front of our house. Two weeks ago, there was a huge pool of water. People are driving by splashing water. I know it's only 40 miles an hour there or 40, 40 kilometers, but nobody goes 40. And uh, cars are driving, flying down the road there, water's flying everywhere. If anybody hydroplaned on there, somebody could get killed. But the whole area ends up filling up with water. So I'm trying to figure out what do I do as a homeowner when there is a pool of water in front of my house? And as we get more and more rain, that the um, area can't hold the rain, it's coming back onto our property. How do we as a homeowner stay there, take care of our property?
Yeah, I I'm not aware of that. I wonder, uh, Mike, can you speak to that at all? Or Mr. Thompson, can you speak to this at all?
I spoke to him today.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, when I spoke to him, he didn't offer to come out. He didn't send anybody out to see where we were. He asked me if I had teeth trough.
Yeah.
And downspouts.
Okay.
So if this was an issue that was never happened before, he would come out and say, what's going on? Like, I need to figure something out.
Okay, we're not gonna get into pointing fingers here. I just wondered, is is there a problem there, Mr. Thompson? Or is it, is the town negligent by any chance? Or is is, we did get a lot of rain last night. We got at least three inches at at our house. So that's, that does tax the drains. There's no doubt about it.
Yes, that's correct. We had about three inches of rain last night. There's, there's areas in the town that when it, when it rains that much in a short period of time, the storm sewers have a hard time keeping up, to say the least. There's um, Cardinal Crescent, First Ave, James Street, Robert Street, the list goes on and on. You mean, the infrastructure that was built in the 70s, 80s, 90s can't handle um, 100-year storm. That happens nowadays. So it is problematic. I did talk to um, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Wood this morning. Once I got her message, I did return her call. She asked me to send her an email, which I did. I told her I'd email in the afternoon. It was a hectic morning, to say the least, with lots of calls about rain and backyards and what have you. So yeah, I don't, you mean, is that area a problem area? I would, I would say, you know, when we get that much rain, it is. I did uh, say, Mrs. Wood, two weeks ago, when I went to the compost, see the boys in the morning, that there was a puddle on the north side of the road on the westbound lane, didn't cross uh, the yellow line, but eventually gets away. But yes, um, we had many calls to the on-call phone. Most of the calls get through to the Public Works um, operator that's on call. Last night, two calls did go to Aqua. I'm not sure how that happened. But Aqua got called for um, Petrolia Line as well as Cardinal Crescent. But I was in correspondence with the on-call guy all weekend with anything from down branches to raccoons to to last night um, water issues. Potentially, maybe the Aqua operator um, told the resident that I reached out to her in the morning, but I hadn't talked to him yet. I hadn't had a chance to chuck in with the Public Works Department. Once I got the message, I called her right back and uh, when we sent an email early this afternoon, the clerk and myself sat down and and sent it. You mean, when when it comes to water going in basements, our standard practice is to tell the residents if if indeed that is their opinion that water went in the basement, to have their insurance company contact us. I wasn't, I wasn't uh, dismissing her concerns whatsoever, but um, that's the policy. That's always been in place since I've been here and and will continue to be so unless I'm otherwise told differently. Like I said, I talked to the clerk today about this, extensively this morning before we emailed her back. Out of this, we put out a PSA on Facebook and social media to talk about uh, drainage on the roads and backyard drainage and what have you. So um, my apologies if you understood that I would be out this morning, but I did return her call.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, dress, dress me to the chair, please, not not to Mr. Thompson.
Okay, sorry, I didn't say that I I thought he was going, coming out. I said, I thought he would.
Okay.
Being an issue of that extent, our whole basement is full of water. It took us all night last night to get rid of it. It was just devastating to see that much water come in.
Right.
And you could not see where our, it looked like our house and the other side of the road was all together. There, there was just a big puddle. Anybody could have drove up our property thinking that's where the road was. Even when the guy came out, he said, um, the Water Works guy, he came out and he said, that is a low area. So if the water is pooling there, uh, Mr. Thompson said that he saw it there two weeks ago pooling. It was on the west side, but within hours, it was right across the whole wa- road. It was on the east side too. So if the water is pooling there, everything is coming to a low area and then coming straight up our road or Maud and Petrolia and washing us out. Like, we're trying to take care of our property, but we need you guys to take care of yours.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll leave it at that. I think I'll ask Mr. Thompson just to take a look and see if there's any quick fix or anything that we can do if we can find. If not, I mean, the, if our system can't handle that much water as long as it's draining and the catch basins are clear and not plugged. But I'll, I'll ask Mr. Thompson to go out, just take another look and see what we can do. Okay?
Can you ask Mr. Thompson to make sure that he comes and sees my husband and I?
Yeah, I think that's, that's reasonable. Sure.
Can you come see us?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, okay. Thank you for coming to address council. Anyone else wishing to address council at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to uh, the financial accounts. I'll ask for a move in a second to put the first motion on for discussion. Moved by councillor O'Hara, seconded by councillor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the March 16th, 2024 to May 7th, 2024, general financial accounts.
Councillor O'Hara, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, we don't.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving those accounts? Opposed, that motion carries. And we have another motion on the floor, I think. Yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Pearson.
So Deputy Mayor Field has declared a conflict of interest on this item.
Okay, thank you. And he's moved back from the table. I'll ask for a move in a second to approve the motion before you move by councillor Welsh, seconded by councillor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive this information only, the March 16th, 2024 to May 7th, 2024, Lampton sanitation accounts.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. All right. Deputy Mayor Field is back in the chair. Okay, we'll go on to administration. We have a report from Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, regarding the town of Petrolia participat- participation in participaction 2024. And I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that would be for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive and file the report of the CAO Treasurer dated the 27th of May, 2024, regarding our town's participation in participaction.
And before I open it up to council, ask Mr. Charlebois if you have anything to add.
Certainly. Uh, through you, your worship, um, this is a candle-wide um, um, competition, basically to help encourage people to, Canadians get more active. Uh, this is Petrolia's first time involved in participaction. Uh, there's lots of activities that are being planned and probably more will evolve. Um, as we go through the month of June, it's it's targeting the month of June. And as you mentioned earlier, the Walk with the Mayor, Jog with the CAO. And we also now have biking. A lot of people on our Health and Wellness uh, Committee has volunteered to lead biking on the same night, the Tuesday night. So there's lots of activities, um, and we're doing some more advertising for it. So I'd encourage everybody to get active and uh, grab a friend, a a family member and just go do something. There's lots to do around town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Any questions from council?
Driving is not an option. Asking for a friend.
Counsel's turn to participate. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
I prefer the more, we, we do have the motion read, your worship, but just a move in a second, please.
It was moved by councillor Welsh, I think, and and seconded by deputy mayor, oh, sorry, councillor Patel. All right, any discussion? All those in favor of approving those, that minute, or sorry, motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to operations. A report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the 2024 sidewalk replacement and award of tender. You have a motion before you. We'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Deputy Mayor Fields, seconded by councillor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the council of the town of Petrolia to receive the report of the Director of Operations, dated May 27th, 2024, regarding the 2024 sidewalk replacement works and that auto form be awarded the Garfield Maple Street connectivity sidewalk project in the amount of $106,480 plus HST. And that the remainder of the R1, R2 roadwork surplus for the 2024 season be allocated to sidewalk capital in the amount of $15,506.07.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, not this time.
Okay, thank you. And we all have seen the map. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities, regarding road closures for the Petrolia 150 Weekend. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by councillor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That is for the council of the town of Petrolia to adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation and Facilities and the Director of Marketing Arts and Communications, dated May 27th, 2024, regarding road closures and parking lane closures for August 17th, 2024.
Any discussion from council? Mrs. Bullock, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us now to the closed session in camera. I just want to read this, then I'll ask for a motion from council to go into camera. Under section 239, 2 of the Act, Item 1 is property 02-2024, Lot 6, Block A, Plan 22 Petrolia, Part of Lot 5, Block A, Plan 22 Petrolia, a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Item 2, Legal, 2024, Number 1, Part Lot 31 and 33, Plan 14 on Eureka Street, Petrolia. F, Advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And the last one is Item 3, Personnel, CAO Annual Performance Review. And B, Personal Matters About An Indi- Inidentifiable Individual, Including Municipal or Local Board Employees. I'll ask for a mover to seconder to go into camera. Moved by councillor Clark, seconded by deputy mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
It's for the council of the town of Petrolia to break from open session and move to closed session.
All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. So we will go into closed session. And I'll ask those present to step just out.